Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by City Attorney Grubbs.
Let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for the privilege of doing your city's, the city's business, Lord, and we thank you for all of our first responders who make it safe for us and for our military that make sure that we have the freedom to go through this process. And we just pray that you will be with us, that we would be examples of your great kindness and that we would do your, this business in a way that honors and glorifies you at all times. Give us wisdom for these decisions, for we ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next order of business is approval of the minutes from July 1. You all have received a copy of that. Are there any suggested additions, corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second to approve the July 1 regular city council meeting minutes. All those in favor, yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. We'll move on to public comment. I have a card from Mr. Bill Arnold. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Bill Arnold, 22 Riverwood Place. I have some handouts that I'd like to distribute first. Now wait till everybody has a copy before I start. Several weeks ago, the city put out a brochure on stormwater runoff debris cleanup. And it talked about how to clean up the ditches. What I want to do is bring to the council the damage that's done by stormwater runoff, particularly one area that I'm aware of. I'm sure there's other in the city, but you'll see why I'm aware of it as we go through this. And the one I want to focus on is starts at the spillway of Lake Willistee, runs through the golf course, runs through Club Manor addition, picking up surface water and runoff from culverts, and then runs through the Riverwood addition, picking up stormwater from surface and culverts. And my mother told me to use pictures because it's quicker.
[laughter]
What I want to point out is the erosion problem has been occurring since 84, since the city was put in place. And there's, it's eroding land anywhere that it runs, that stormwater runs through these, the stormwater runoff ditches, particularly from the lake to Rector Break. And I, in Figure 2, I'm very familiar with this corner because my house is right below the corner of that, so I get to sit on my back deck and watch the water run down the runoff. So the portion in the Riverwood addition, I'm very familiar with. And in this area, where the blue line is the ditch and the red line is where it's eroding the ditch because it's changing direction several times there. I've lived in that house since 2005. I've not seen anybody come out to do any maintenance or any review to see if anything's being, if there's any damage done by the runoff. In 2012, the Barber Court runoff ditch, which is in Figure 3, is a long line coming from the bottom right-hand corner going up. And then there's a little curved part that's in the runoff from Lake Willistee. Those were ripped out by the city after I called them and told them that the Barber's Court runoff was eroding our property and our lower deck was starting to sag because the property was getting eroded away. And they came out and ripped out that part of the Barber's Court runoff and that little corner on the, the Lake Willistee runoff. And on page, the Figure 4 and Figure 5 are just two instances of erosion that's occurred. And because I look right up the ditch, I could see this sewer line sagging and the runoff running and actually dripping into the runoff. So I called them on my water and they came out and stabilized the pipe and put a new support in place. And that was done in March 2013. Figure 6 is, since February 2013, the banks have, banks continue to erode every year. In November 2018, the picture shows a large tree that was undermined and fell into the ditch and it was, had some blockage of the ditch. I reported the tree to Public Works. They came out and looked at it. And that's all that happened so far since 2013, since that was reported. The next picture on Figure 7 is the picture of the tree when it was in place six months prior to that. So it only took six months for it to road and fall. The problem now is, if you look at Figure 8, and I have an arrow pointing to a ditch that's, or a waterway that's being eroded around the ball of the tree rather than following a ditch. And if you look in, just above the arrow between the two trees that are above there, you can see the riprap the city put in, in that, in the corner when they put it in, in 2013. And what I want to point out is, is this erosion continues in the path that it's in without some sort of abatement. The green line shows where the new line, that new area is eroding around the ball of the tree and the red circle shows where that targets. And if that erosion has not stopped, the, then I expect that point that's in the red circle to start to erode and there are several trees in that area as it's, as it puts a new, a new path in its place. This satellite picture, if you'll notice, the picture's still, the tree is still standing in this, in this satellite picture. This is a 2018 out of the county assessor's office, and I, it must be in early 2018. Without stabilization in these areas, the stormwater's just going to continue to damage it. It's unclear how extensive this erosion can be. For the light rains we're having like today, you don't see a whole lot of rushing water coming down there. When we had the rain prior to the floods and we had the heavy rains in March, there was a torrent coming through there and you could really see how it was coming down and eroding the ditch. But if we, if it continues, it'll just continue to damage the areas and take out more trees. And the action required on Figure 10 on the next page, clearly the stormwater ditches should be maintained. They should also be occasionally have, there should be a process that they get looked at every so many years to see if, what kind of damage is occurring. I cannot tell you what's occurred above the Riverwood addition because it is extremely difficult to walk out that path and I have no purpose up there. But in the Riverwood addition, where it runs through there, I can tell you what's occurred there. And in, in my opinion, riprap ought to be put around that whole corner to prevent further erosion. And what I would like to see, the city do is set a process, process in place to review these ditches to see what kind of damage is being done. This isn't the only place in town that we have ditches running. It's only, not the only place in town that we have city culverts that are also running into these ditches and causing problems. But I'm well aware of this one because I look at it all the time. So I bring this to you because I think it's an issue that you should address. It's a issue that won't go away. It won't get any better. Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Arnold, and I have talked to Mr. Arnold about this and two or three other property owners on the same ditch. I've approached the city two or three times about this and there hasn't been anything that I know of that's happened. It's becoming a serious problem because we're going, we're getting property damage from it. For example, behind Mr. Arnold's house, this last flood, he almost lost his deck over this. And it's coming from this drainage ditch. And I'm very familiar, I've walked, there is, now, he has neighbors that border along this also, and their property is being jeopardized. And it's only a question of time until they lose property value over this, if they haven't already. I suspect a, an alert potential buyer would walk back there and look at this and question whether they really want to get involved. You know, I would. Now, there is something else I want to bring up that I didn't hear Mr. Arnold speak to, which is important to us as a city and me as an individual. But this drainage easement, drainage ditch flows into Rector Break. And it, it is immediately behind Ron Keltner's house is where it flows into Rector Break. I have, I can tell you stories because I live on Rector Break and I, and that is filling in from all this mud and debris and dirt that's floating down there. It's filling in the break. Okay? Now, that'll turn it into a mosquito pit. We also have the peninsula on the other side, which someday, hopefully, we have planned to turn into a park. We're going to lose that. Okay? I have actually been on my back porch and seen people go by where this easement flows into Rector Break. I saw two good old boys drinking beer in a bass boat and they came flying down through the break and they hit this and it just stopped them dead. Because I mean, it's like this deep. Okay? And there are times when they pull the water down that it's just dirt, it's mud. That's how shallow it is there. So it's going to prevent, it's only a question of time, it's going to prevent all access to the other half of Rector Break. You won't be able to get through there anymore. These old boys, when they hit it, it stopped them, it threw them out along with a bunch of empty beer cans and stuff. Of course, they're sitting here in the mud and I figured they'd be all mad, but they just looked at each other and just started laughing. They thought that was the funniest thing, so they packed up the beer cans and headed back. You know? But you see that kind of stuff all the time and it's coming from this ditch right here. It needs some riprap in it to stop this.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, the area you guys are referring to is right behind my house. I've lived there for 23 years. There was a period of time up, up the, this is an old creek bed, is what it is. And behind my house is actually a river inlet because when they dammed up, put in the lock and dammed it, backed the river water up. And it extends up beyond one of those little areas where it interconnects from behind your house and into the main channel coming down. At that point, then, as you go upward, it's, it's, it's a dry creek and it comes, it does come rushing down. It does bring a lot of debris and it does all go out. It hadn't changed the water level or, or the depth behind my house because that water hits it and whatever's accumulated behind my house gets flushed on out into Rector Break. Rector Break is, I would imagine it is filling in, but I think it's, it may be kind of a natural course of events. I'm not sure. I don't know how much debris comes out of the lakes on the golf course. And I'm not even sure if all that water really comes, that comes out of Lake Willistee, I'm not sure it all goes down there. I think some of it gets channeled off behind Country Club Arkansas. And at one time, somebody told me it all did. So I'm not real sure if all the water does come down from the lake. But I've noticed no erosion over 23 years behind my house. But again, that's, that's, there has been some up creek from me back to where the water wasn't. I can't remember the name of the gentleman up there, but Birch Johnson spent quite a bit of money doing some erosion work down there. They knocked trees down, they lined the banks with them. And I asked him to stop where the water begins because there wasn't a problem from that point on. And he did. He said he wouldn't go any further because it kind of ruined some of the scenic beauty along there. I'm not sure if riprap's going to help the debris going into Rector Break, take somebody smarter than me, an engineer, hydrologist, hydrologist, somebody like that. But one question I'd ask you is your, your deck, you're really close to the floodplain and your flood, is your deck in the floodplain?
Yes.
Did it get in the water?
Yes. During the flood, it did, yes.
So I'm not sure the city's responsible then if, if your deck's having problems because it's-
The deck was having problems well before the flood.
Yeah, but-
If you, if you look back in here, it was, it was 2013, which is six years ago.
And it may be, it may be in the, it probably depends on whether it's in the drainage easement. If it's not in the drainage easement, then may, maybe it is a city problem, but if it is in the drainage easement, I can't see how it would be. But anyway, I thought I'd share what I know about it.
And that's not the, what Alderman Mosley is talking about, if you look at, back at Figure 2, where the, the blue line straightens out and goes down to the left, that is a straight shot from there to Rector Break. There is, what it, what it erodes is erodes as it flows through the ditch. It does not have three corners as it does where I have the red line there, where there's an extreme amount of erosion as the water changes direction. And that's where the erosion is caught, is occurring, is where the water's changing direction. If it was a straight shot, it would just be taking soil out with it. But when it changes direction like that, it's wearing away, it's undermining trees, it's under, as I showed you, it undermines the support for the, for the sewer line that goes across there.
Thank you, Mr. Arnold.
Thank you.
And then just for the councils, I didn't see your button there, Mr. Arnold.
I just, I did it. Our director of city works is here.
Yeah, would you like for me to go ahead and, and talk? So the city does have, so what we don't do during public comment is sort of change unless they're onto an agenda item.
Okay.
That said, I was going to notify the council. This is one of the things, we have a, a long list of items that we've been waiting for dry weather to get to. The, I don't know what we've discussed regarding riprap. I know I've been out to portions of this. I've been out there with Mr. Hogan, Mr. Grummer. I don't know if right behind Mr. Arnold's house, but this isn't the first communication we've got from Mr. Arnold on that. So we have plans to remove that tree and root ball. It's on the list of things that is waiting for drier weather. So what folks think is that once we get dry enough weather to get our equipment back there, that we're magically going to hit all of those spots on day one. So that tree, Mr. Arnold, is in, in plans to be removed with drier weather. I'm not sure about where we are with riprap or if we've discussed. I think the city engineers even looked at this area some as well. And then we had talked about reinforcing a certain area, if not with riprap, with, what are they, wood beams or the-
Cross ties?
Something like that. I don't recall off the top of my head. Haven't looked at it in a while. Did that answer your question, Mr. Arnold?
Okay. Thanks.
The next order of business is the financial statement review, and that will be Ms. Vega.
Hi there. And we're going over the June 2019 financials. The first slide, you can see that the sanitation fund is 3% below budget, almost flat. The street, sanitation is 3% below budget. The street fund is flat to budget and the general fund is up 8% over budget. Looking at general fund revenues, overall, the general fund revenue is down 2% to budget and down 1% to prior year. County millage is up 3% over prior years. County sales tax is up 3% over prior years. City sales tax is down 9% to prior years. And this has to do with an anomaly in 2018 where there were some audits, some sales tax audits that were done by the state, and so we got extra money. But when you compare where we are today compared to 2017, we're up 12% over 2017. Police and fire, half-cent sales tax, we've collected $624,000 to date and franchise fees are down 4% to prior year. Street fund revenue, overall, revenue is up 4% over prior year. County millage is up 6%. State turnback is up 2% and street aid is up 3% to prior year. Sanitation fund, we're finally at a quarterly reporting. We are up 20% over prior year and this is due to increased collections with Central Arkansas Water and new builds, new services coming online. General fund expenses are 8% under budget and 5% over prior year, primarily due to police and fire. Police is up 9% over prior year and this is due to personnel and KMAC Village 911 revenues that we will not get the rest of the year. Public Works is flat to prior year. Parks is up 7% to prior years and this is due, mainly due to Rolling Oaks facility. Senior services are up 13% over prior year and this is due to personnel and building maintenance. City services are under prior year due to workers' comp savings for this year. This is just looking at the, the general fund expenditures in a different way. Overall, the budget, we should have spent 50% of our budget at this point in the year and we're below that except in two departments. City council is due to timing differences and code enforcement is due to Jim Morley's retirement last month. And when people reach retirement, they get paid out their accrued balances for vacation and whatnot. And, and that's what the variance is there. The street fund, overall, the street expenditures are 30% under budget and 30% under prior year. This is due to 11% over prior year for reallocating Public Works and street personnel. And operating expenses are under 71% prior year because we were waiting on a $296,000 reimbursement for the third interest design. And then sanitation, due to the reallocation of Public Works and sanitation employees, personnel is down 9% and the operating expenditures are over $46,000 prior year and that's due to vehicle maintenance increases, tip, tipping fees, fuel and professional fees. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Scott?
Ms. Vega, what are the grant monies funding? Are they the, is that the sidewalk project or?
Yes. Yes.
If there are no additional questions, I'd entertain a motion to accept the financials. We have a motion and a second to accept the financials. Any discussion on that matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got two motions and a-
No second.
And a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no unfinished business, but we'll move right on to new business. The first order of business is a final report from the Tree City Task Force. That'll be given by the chairman, Mr. Doug Ladner. You all should have received a copy of that final report on your desk when you arrived.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, Madam Clerk and Madam Attorney. I'm Doug Ladner, 174 Lilly Drive. I was fortunate enough to be designated the chair of this robust task force. But I think that this, our, our charge was basically to determine if we were effectively meeting the requirements necessary to maintain our certification as a Tree City USA. In the document that you have, which includes the four requirements to becoming a Tree City USA, you will notice that we meet all those requirements. As a matter of fact, we put more than our $2 per capita into, into this program. It was determined that possibly the majority of that, those funds were going for a removal of trees and brush removal, et cetera. And maybe a smaller amount was going to replant trees. And that's one of the things that I, that we think that should be accomplished. And I think the way through that is the task force recommends that a better communication be established between the Parks and Recs, Public Works and the Tree Board. No one of those groups is at fault for, let's say, somewhat lack of communication. It just needs to be organized to where, when a certain thing occurs, a removal of a tree occurs, that someone has noticed, notified that, so that things can be taken, so steps can be taken to replace that tree, not necessarily where it was down, but at another place where it can be maintained and taken care of to where it can grow. The members of the task force were Brandon Hines, David Gershner, Dana Nash, Dave Mosley, Lori Holloway, Marion Scott and myself. We met twice and we do recommend that, or do notify the council that we are in good stead as far as the Tree Board, Tree City USA is concerned, with the one caveat that maybe we work together more closely with Public Works, Park and Recs and the Tree Board. A related issue came out of this discussion and it was, just stated that our building requirements are unique. And I'll use that word because I think that we're going to request that the council establish a new task force to look into the building requirements with the city. That they do so in a manner that could possibly mitigate some of the concerns that we see that have been brought to our attention. And it is suggested that the task force should consider, but among other items, incentives. And it's something that sort of, when you said it, I said, gee, that sounds wise. And after discussions, we felt that, yes, it was. It was not necessarily a monetary consideration. It was something very simple. One was maybe if trees were needed for a certain area that the city could provide those trees, the developer or builder could plant those trees in a way that they would, could be maintained and survive. Another one was real simple, just giving a builder or a developer a job well done, a certificate or something saying, you know, we're proud of what you've done. I don't think that's been done before. And as a matter of fact, I have been one of those, have not been too kindly to the developers or, or some of the builders because of maybe years and years ago, ago, excuse me, what happened in the city. But suffice it to say that if we could provide a, a task force that is made up, excuse me, of the Parks, well, Parks and Recs, the Planning Commission, zoning and planning, or planning and zoning, zoning and planning, one of those two. And people in, in, in the community, as long as developers and builders and of course, some representatives from the council, would be very productive. It is not going to be a small endeavor. It is not dealing with trees, it's dealing with regulations or requirements. In that, trees would be considered as long as with anything else, but the emphasis would be on what are our regulations and how can we make them more- on one of our regulations and how can we make them more user-friendly, I guess, without hurting the environment that we feel we need here in Mammell. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you for taking the time from your spare time to do this. Thank you so much. You're the right guy.
It was interesting.
Thank you, Mr. Ladner. What we can do at this point, it may be a good time, is just move on to the next agenda item, which I anticipated some of the discussion that may occur as a result of some of the Tree Board's recommendation, and so I've added the idea of a planning and development task force as an agenda item. One of the issues that I often hear, and I'm sure you guys have heard it plenty, is that our planning zoning, a lot of our city code both either stifles development, unreasonably increases costs, or doesn't protect the natural aesthetics we want, or it feels like we just hear complaints from every direction about a lot of our planning and zoning, as well as other development-related ordinances. The problem with that is that even really identifying what everyone's concerns are and then formulating a process to even approach a comprehensive way where we are looking at this in not a piecemeal fashion is really quite a big undertaking. And one that I think it's time for, but also not something that you want to just throw, you know, five random folks in there and tell them, hey, before you figure out and advise on how we can change our planning and zoning ordinances, first make sure you have a really good understanding of what they are, and then how to do that is quite an undertaking for those that have looked at those codes. And so really, I just wanted to open this up for discussion. The idea of if the council was looking at that sort of task force, I've passed, I jotted down some quick language that I'll just read out loud, but if the council was so inclined to form a planning and development task force with these three purposes in mind, first of all, to evaluate and assess the city's current planning and development codes, identify major concerns regarding them, and then to recommend a process or procedure for updating or replacing them if necessary, might be useful. I don't know that we're going to get a comprehensive review done properly without really bringing in a consultant or someone professional that isn't trying to reinvent the will but is familiar with how other cities have done it when they're looking for the types of code that we'd like. So anyways, I'd like to just open this up, you know, at the moment. Councilmember Vapurzane.
So I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
As the majority of Mammell has already been developed, here's a question that I have. This is an awesome idea, probably ten or fifteen years late, but as a matter of percentages, is there anybody, I'm not looking for an acreage thing, but percentage of undeveloped land in Mammell that we believe will be developed in the future as far as residential here in the city limits? What are your thoughts as far as a percentage? Ten percent, more than ten, less?
Your guess is as good as mine, but so one thing to keep in mind is we don't know what we're talking about for annexing. We know that there are folks who would, all else being equal, would prefer to be in the city limits, but there's some strong reasons to not want property in the city limits, and really, the only reasons for it are police and fire and code enforcement, if you think that that's a good thing, depending on what side of the equation you are in. Let's not forget that there will be redevelopments at some point in the future, possible annexations, but I don't think there's a huge area in town, percentage-wise, that's undeveloped and will develop. But we're also looking at things like the Third Interchanges, we're looking at North Mammell revitalization or vitalization, that these are things that those entities are very concerned about, making sure that we're not using these old ordinances to try and say we want something new and shiny, but using the old algorithms.
It's been a while since I've gone through again our strategic plan. Does our strategic plan deal with any of these issues to any of y'all's knowledge?
Any of what issues? Development?
Well, to any of these three issues here, I mean, that's kind of our...
The strategic plan didn't delve into code, like the specifics of the code, but I want to say it even advocated for multi-use zoning that we don't currently have quite in that sort of way. Let's look at, there's a growing trend of development where maybe you might have some retail on the bottom or office on the bottom, but homes on top, and that doesn't really fit into our mold, so if you were wanting to develop that, what do you do? You're like, well, it doesn't fit.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answered anything or just created more questions.
It did, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, the cart's already out there and the horse is way in front of it. I want to make sure we weren't trying to circle the wagons at this point, but you're right, there's a lot of undeveloped and future development properties.
And things that will later redevelop. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, is this the type of task force you alluded to back when we did the Tree Task Force or the meeting before?
I think so. And I was talking with Scott Grummer before, and almost, these sort of things can be done through, a lot of times, cities will hire the consultants or put together a team that will then, as part of that function, form a committee or task force that will serve as a steering element to it, but, which should be, I think, the more ideal way, but we don't have a consultant lined up or funds to do that at this point in time. Or maybe even, maybe we don't think that they do need to be changed that big, or maybe there's a few small changes, we don't have to throw it all out. And so if the council wants to put together a task force for this bigger picture, I'd recommend it. Look at, kind of, do we need a consultant? Do we need to sort of, you know, throw it all away and rebuild it, or are there tweaks that we can make? If they're just little tweaks, then maybe we don't need to bring in a consultant and go through that whole process.
My thought is, if this is part of what you wanted to move forward on as your, as the new mayor and all that, I'm all for it. You know, whatever, I'm willing to explore any vision or ways of redoing things, and I'd be interested in being on such a task force. I wouldn't want to chair it, I don't think, and obviously, it would need some folks from our Planning Commission, I think, on there. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I just, I think this will be very beneficial for us down the road, and what Councilmember Vapurzane was talking about, while a lot of this area is developed, I think there's still a lot of low-hanging fruit that we could grab by taking a look at this. You know, I've been trying to think the last couple of weeks or a few months about how we can do a better job of keeping more trees in our city and what we can do, and it seems like we have a lot of four-lane roads in the middle of town that I've never been passed by a car on, you know, like Club Manor and Millwood, and you see a lot of communities going back to two-lane streets, the Soma District in Little Rock, Argenta, they're taking out their four lanes because they're not necessarily needed and going down to two lanes. And so I think some of these things could be wrapped into that, you know, considering how much surface parking we have with, for commercial properties, we don't want to be a bunch of parking lots in the center of town. And so if, you know, if we were to do a few things, think outside of the box with the way our streets are designed, maybe not requiring those existing four lanes that dead-end, maybe we could narrow those down to two lanes, since there's not any traffic there. Yeah, and just, and leaving some, leaving some buffer space in between the road and where residences would be built, that would be trees, you know, just little things like that. I think that could all go into this, but I would be all for revisiting this and making it, property's expensive, right, especially commercial property? And a paved parking lot is expensive in the sense of it's property that's not earning you any money as a business owner. And so anything that we can do to make it easier for businesses to succeed and not have to spend so much on just a parking lot and give extra green space and, you know, think outside of the box and some things, so I'd be all for it.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Councilmember Mosley?
Are you wanting to establish this task force tonight, or are you wanting...
Well, so, hey, what, the purpose of me putting this on the agenda is in response to that Tree City Task Force, and if we are going to, if the council is going to put forth a task force to address some of those concerns, whether it's the building regulations or creating more tree-friendly developments that have incentives in them, then I would recommend this sort of task force to go in place. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so maybe entertain a motion to go ahead and form it tonight, is that what you're saying?
Sure, we could do that. Let me, let's hit these lights first.
It's up to you if you, yeah.
Councilmember Scott?
Well, some other ideas have been brought up tonight that could change the motion for forming that task force, looking at the strategic plan, looking at something besides just development, looking at current properties that need to be modified or could be modified to accomplish some of these things. I personally would like to take just maybe the next two weeks, bring this back up next week, and maybe reword this to incorporate some of the ideas that have been discussed here tonight. The focus of this is good, but it doesn't incorporate the things that others were talking about, so maybe if we could just take a little bit of time, each of us look this over and see if there's some way of rewording the function of the task force to incorporate some of these thoughts, maybe.
That's not an insane idea. Councilmember Holt?
So this is pertaining to future developments and not retro in what is already here, right?
Redevelopment would be included, right? So, and what this is, is what we're discussing, but what I was putting out there was, what I was trying to do is steer away from a task force that was solely looking at the relationship between trees and development, because I think that any meaningful change in that area has to be part of a bigger, more comprehensive plan, or else it's just, it's broken, if that makes sense. But this would not necessarily require someone to make changes to their property currently, for example, and usually those things are grandfathered in, if that's what you're asking.
The time is now, I mean, if it's ever going to be, well, in accordance with what Chairman Scott said, it might be prudent to, if there's other additions to it that need to be considered, time is on our side, but it needs to be at least initiated where we start and wind up at a point when we go forward.
So do we want to wait until two weeks and just throw it back on the agenda at that point in time? Seems reasonable. Okay. And we, we'll see if we can't work on something in-house to add to that. So put your brain caps on and take the tinfoil hats off. I didn't think of it, that was way none. I'm not on a roll today. That is not what I was meaning. The next order of business is the first reading of ordinance 982 amending chapter 66 regarding street signs. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
We had enacted an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 982, an ordinance amending chapter 66 of the Mammell City Code to require additional street signs indicating that a street is a private street.
So this is an idea I've been holding on to since the last time we were talking about private streets. Currently, some, not all of our private streets have a little sign underneath it that says something like "Private Drive, City Maintenance Ends." Many of you have probably driven past signs and not noticed them because they're not that big. What this ordinance would do is require something akin to this on the street signs for private streets. This looks massive, but it's actually not that big, because if you compare it to our standard street sign, something like this, or maybe like this, I don't know, makes it noticeable, which does several things. I think, first of all, it lets people know if it's a residential neighborhood and you're about to buy in a private street, if you missed this on all the street signs, I don't feel as bad as if you missed a sign this big four blocks over. So what we would do with this is we could go ahead and put these on all the private street signs now that are already here for a cost of less than $1,000 if someone was building a development that had a private street on it, that would just come with their cost of getting the street signs on there. And so this is on first reading. Is there any questions, comments, concerns?
I think you answered. My only question was, would it be, apply retroactively to those private drives we already have, so the city would go around and put those up?
It would, but so I think the logistical nightmare of tracking down the private owners to get them to put it up would not be worth the cost. It could be done for under $1,000, and I think it's a public purpose in that we're trying to keep the public informed. But if there's no additional comments on that, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Moving on to the next agenda item, resolution 2019-22 amending the 2019 general fund budget. You should have received an updated copy on your desk when you arrived. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2019-22, a resolution to amend the 2019 general fund budget.
So this is with regards to Mr. Jim Morley's retirement. When an individual retires after a certain amount of time, they get paid for their vacation time, personal leave time, and I think personal leave time, and up to, I want to say, 480 hours of sick time. So anytime you have a longstanding employee retire, it's going to ding the budget. Technically, I've asked Mr. Carter to not hire his replacement as a code enforcement officer until we know that the council will approve this. So technically, you don't have to approve it and will be okay. There'll just be no code enforcement officer out there. That said, by approving this, then it'll allow us to hire that position that's currently vacant, and I know everyone in building code enforcement and permits would appreciate that.
Motion to approve resolution 2019-22.
Motion second, is there any discussion on that matter? If not, all those in favor say yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries, and Mr. Carter, if you have an individual selected, you may hire him or her. That concludes the agenda items for today. Mayor's comments are, I don't know why I gave that to you. Mayor's comments, first of all, I said earlier something that might have, it's a little late to say because Mr. Arnold's left, I didn't mean to at any point imply that Mr. Arnold was one of those people that thought that we'd get right out there, and as he left, I thought, oh, I hope that wasn't misinterpreted, so that wasn't meant to be a stab at him. I've included a letter from Plaski County Judge Hyde in your council packet. For those of you who have been on the city council for a number of years now will know that there have been debates in the past about how much the City of Mammell and the other cities will be paying to the county. There's been a longstanding feud over the definition of a statute that says that, that basically says when a prisoner is a prisoner of the city versus a prisoner of the county. When we arrest someone and take them to jail, we take them to the county jail, we don't have our own Mammell jail with folks out there for more than just a very short period of time used for processing. I included this letter in here because there was a court case that basically did not go in the city's favor, that I'm sure the city attorney could explain in more detail if she'd like to.
Sure.
Before I proceed.
So the case was Mississippi County versus City of... So the case was Mississippi County versus City of Blithville. This is a 2018 case, and it discussed when a prisoner is deemed to be a prisoner of a municipality. And it adopted a definition from an attorney general opinion that it, a prisoner is to be a prisoner of a municipality until, from the point of intake until either charging on a felony offense. So if we bring someone in for a felony, until the county prosecutor files those charges, we get that bill. At that point, they become a prisoner of the state. And that's not something we generally have total control over. And we can set, we can get them on the docket and get it ready and get it passed to them, but we can't control how long it takes them to look at it and what they decide to file. It can be several months. The second is sentencing on a misdemeanor offense. So if there's, it's not very common that people get sentenced to jail on a misdemeanor offense, but it can happen. And then, and from the point of intake until release on a municipal ordinance violation. I've never heard of anybody going to jail at all on a municipal ordinance violation, but I guess it's possible theoretically. What happens, though, with some misdemeanor offenses is they'll be, we had one recently, for example, where the individual was convicted of a DWI and they were given a large fine, of course. Never paid one dime on that fine, never stopped showing up to court, was repeatedly, you know, like, would try to get them to come in for failure to pay. Well, eventually, they were picked up on a warrant, and so they took them to the jail. And at that point, I asked the judge to commit them to prison for the next 52 days because they're not going to pay. So if they're going to be punished for that offense at all, that was the method that we have to use. So I guess that's a little bit of background information on why we use the jail perhaps more than you might think we would. I'm sure you guys noticed in the packet, for this year, our expenditures under the new calculations that they're talking about using would be closer to $115,000 than the $51,000 we're currently paying. Also, so you're aware, these are, they're still going back and forth among the municipalities in Plaski County and, and the county officials. So this is still being negotiated. I don't know that it's in stone. There's some arguments that we shouldn't pay at this rate, that the, the use, the daily use fee is too high, because they're not taking into account that they get a lot of reimbursements from other levels of government. But I don't know, you know, at this point, we don't know exactly where we'll land on that.
Yeah, so, so, for the, we pay currently $51,274 a year, and that includes all the jail that they'll give us. Some of the estimates that they've put in here go from, you know, the estimated 115 to, I want to say in 2018, they estimated, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, 2018 information, if they were, if we were billed as they're currently proposing, would have been $229,000. And then in 2017, I might be getting my years mixed up, but the last several years, up to $83,000. So I'm pointing this out now because it's been talked about in the past. Your quorum court passed an ordinance in favor of their version of billing, and so we've been duking it out. But I want to give everyone a heads up now that budgeting for this could be interesting because it's not a very predictable number.
Retro?
It would be going forward, starting from 2020, January 1, 2020. Councilmember Williams?
So this is, this $51,274 is part of the interlocal agreement that we have with the county?
Correct.
Okay, so, the, did the county come up with the $51 per DM?
Yes.
The county did. Okay, now do the, I'm assuming they base that cost on what it costs to house someone daily?
Using their formula?
Right, right. So could we see that formula? Could that be, is that, are we privy to that formula?
Sure, and that's, that's one of the things we've been negotiating. They also have a, they're listing $193 or something intake fee, meaning that first day. So there's a good number of people that we'll take to jail because they have a warrant, and the warrant says you have to appear to court.
Get their signed out.
And then they, they get to jail, and they're given a citation with a court date, and they send us a bill for $200, which, by the way, might be what they would have owed had that person paid, you know? In other words, in order to collect $200, we might be paying $200. So it gets a bit wonky.
I, I would like to see that formula, if, if at all, is it, oh, you have it?
I can, and we can, I do have the, the numbers that they're using. It's a couple-page handout, and we can include that in the packet next, next meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's based on a total cost, and so, so what the, what the mayors have done.
It just seems high to me, you know?
Yeah.
$50, $53 in the county jail, and, you know, I'm being facetious here, but you're feeding them for like 93 cents a day.
I know.
I mean, have you seen the food at the county jail?
Well, the, the medical costs are the big thing.
Yeah, I know, they have the whole, yeah. Okay, so if we could see this formula, now, so this, this interlocal agreement that we have with, with the county, and you're saying it's in negotiations right now, are we part of those negotiations as a, as a council?
Well, it depends. When you say in negotiations, if you, if you look at the letter from Judge Hyde.
I know, then it's like we're, we're able to.
It's, so their position is.
Part of the negotiate.
Their position.
It's one-sided negotiate.
Correct. Their position is it's non-negotiable, this is the fee, and so the cities have banded together. If, if you think our numbers are a, a, a big jump, go take a peek at Little Rocks or North Little Rocks, and they're, you know, they're duking it out. So really, we're letting them do the, I'm letting them do the heavy lifting because they're in it for millions. But yeah, so we all signed a letter. I was supposed to go down to the quorum court where all the mayors were going to go talk and plead our case, but based on this letter, and Mayor Smith was not, they postponed it. So I don't know whether to even say there's negotiations going on so much as one side is saying this is the way it is and everyone else saying no.
I know, I saw that letter.
There are discussions.
But you all do know, happen to know, that we do have two quorum court members that represent the City of Maumell, and so please feel free to reach out to them. They, both of them, to their credit, reached out to me when this ordinance was coming before, and what we didn't have at that, that time is even these estimates to know how, really even how they're counting days or how they're keeping track of things. And I'm not so sure those numbers are, well, so would everyone.
It's still cheaper, I mean, $51,000 is still cheaper than Maumell having our own jail.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's, they're, they're pretty expensive to run and operate, and, but I don't know so much for Little Rock, though.
Right.
So, yeah, you're right, they should be doing the heavy lifting. But I still do, I still have a, you know, a question or two.
We do happen to have someone on the city council who knows a little bit about jail stuff, right?
A little bit.
Yeah, a little bit, okay.
Staying along.
We'll get you whatever information we have, but I think that's one of our complaints is that we don't, we, we don't have enough information, it's one of my complaints, to say that the information they have is even accurate.
That's right. And I'd love to see that. I think that's fair.
I, yeah, and I, I agree. We'll see what we can do.
Okay, thanks. Oh, Terry. Get it.
Yeah, no.
I mean, and you can also reach out to Barry Hyde, and you can reach out to.
Well, after returning this letter, I don't think I want to.
Well, where, you know, you're, you're a constituent, too.
The, next thing I wanted to bring up is the Crystal Hill Road public hearing recap. I know I saw a lot of y'all out there, and we had a really amazing turnout from four to five. I mean, standing room only, and then we kind of played cards for the next couple hours. But it was, I think it was really good. We got to hear from some of the folks that owned property in there, and they got to ask not only us questions, but the engineers. I heard for the first time, it looks like the engineers are claiming that they should have bid documents prepared and ready to go in six to eight weeks. So, because they made the mistake of saying it, let's all hold them to it, but no.
Oh, that's good.
That, that, that means that we begin the bid process in six to eight weeks. And we are, we have secured, I think, another right-of-way in, or easement today. But again, I think, I think there's at least one resident who has said that they're not interested in it, and so you guys may be seeing it before the council. Someone gave me a very serious look outside there, so if that's why, if you're wondering why I'm laughing. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, there were a couple of gentlemen that represented the Masonic Lodge, whatever, did, did, discussion about how to maybe help them with their problem. Do you know how that?
We have a, so the, it's the Holloway firm is the engineers that have been on that project. The engineer that is the head of the project is Mark Retter. Mark Retter's out of town on vacation, and so we have a debriefing scheduled, maybe even for later this week, where we'll get to take the concerns we heard and then beat them up with them on that. But yes.
Okay.
So we don't have a, we don't have a solution to that yet.
All right, you, you personally haven't been in touch with one of them since the hearing?
Well, I have with Mr. Holloway, with Eric Holloway. It's, it's, but he's not the one that has been the, the big engineer on that project. Or are you talking about Bendemir?
I'm talking about the two gentlemen that were there.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I spoke with them quite extensively multiple times throughout that meeting, and we've spoken with them before and maybe even subsequent to that.
Okay, the reason I was asking is they were saying, oh, we'll be there on Monday night, we're going to be, you know, bring our torches, so I just wondered if you'd resolved anything with them.
Ranged.
But it sounds like, it sounds like you're still in discussion there, so, thanks.
Councilmember Gardner?
What were the complaints about the road? Was it access or the way the driveways would be configured? What was the?
They want to be able to come out and make a, a left turn.
Go either direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they wanted a left turn out or in, and what we may have to, anytime you have a median, you can't give a cut to every property, but we do need to make sure that every property, even if you have to go down a bit and do a U-turn, that, that the roads are wide enough to accommodate that. Councilmember Mosley, were you going to hit your button?
Well.
By just sensing things?
Yeah, I thought about it, but the, yeah, their, their problem was, is there's not a way to make a U-turn supposedly, and so they were trying to figure out how in the world they're going to get in there. If they couldn't get in one way, they'd have to come all the way through North Little Rock to get into their facility to make a right turn, so, but anyway, it, it'll all get worked out, I'm sure. Thank you.
For, for those that don't know, Bendemir Grotto is, Bendemir Grotto, the Mystic Order of the Veiled Prophets of the Enchanted Realm, which really confused me when I first saw that until I realized it was a Masonic.
What's his title? Say it again.
It is the Bendemir Grotto, the veiled, what is it? The Mystic, Mystic Order of the Veiled Prophets of the Enchanted Realm.
Those are the Masons?
Yeah, yeah. It was, well, it was that particular little group, but that was what's on, on the property rights of.
It's an offshoot of the Masonic Lodge.
You always say that.
It's not the Masonic Lodge.
Okay.
It's not the Illuminati.
No, that's right.
We need to point out, we, I sent out that thing, it looks like, for the brainstorming
session, near unanimous support for Monday, August 5 at noon. The only person who responded that they wouldn't be able to make that was Councilmember Saunders.
What time?
Say that, say it again, what day?
Monday, August 5.
Okay.
At noon.
Okay.
Here in the council?
Here in the council chambers.
Oh, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. And what I'd suggest is we just sit up here like we are right now, but I'll gavel us in and we can just go to town. It'd be nice if we had the agenda. I did receive an email from at least one person. If you have something that you'd like to talk about, maybe we can get an agenda put together. So just go ahead and email that to me and we can go to town.
And this will be open to the public?
Yes, and, and probably just go ahead and record it and post it up online.
Okay, cool.
I wanted to also address, there was a discussion about rector chute dredging. There's, dredging is, is an issue whenever you don't, whenever you don't do it, where you'll get infill, right? So we're seeing that at Lake Willistine. There's areas that are starting to fill in over time as soot and dirt gets washed out into there. It hits the, sort of the shallower areas sooner, but for those that are really paying attention to new and old pictures, you'll see that there's, the islands are getting a little bit bigger, the, you know, if dredging doesn't occur in the next thousand years, it'll just be a nice green field, right? So something has to occur at some point, not only there, Lake Valencia, we see it, anywhere you have these detention ponds, you'll see soot rolling every which way. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Just, just for information from some of us that were not here at the time, several years ago, Cliff Christopher, Mayor Mike Watson, and myself fought really hard to get this dredging through, and we actually got it almost accomplished. And then we had a private landowner on the peninsula that kind of screwed things up, and by claiming that the dirt under the water was his. Anyway, I haven't looked, and I need to, we had, like, I don't remember, $50,000 set aside to contribute to the dredging of Rector Break. I don't know whether that's still in our budget or not, I haven't seen it. But the rest of the money came from the Bass Association that does tournaments once, twice, three times a year on the river. It's a big organization. They chipped in a bunch of money. Gammon Fish really wanted Rector Break dredged. They wanted it. They claim that in the history, in recorded history, before that started filling in, Rector Break was the absolute best natural fish hatchery in the Arkansas, on the Arkansas River in Arkansas, and they would like to get it back. They chipped in a bunch of money, too. We even made arrangements for getting a, and I'll come into the point here in a second. The Gammon Fish actually got a dredge that was donated to them from a federal government agency, and they were willing to use that, but there was a lag time in there because they had to train a crew to run it, okay? And then by the time we got back to actually do it, diesel fuel shot out the roof, and we didn't have enough money again. So it's kind of been dropped. I'd really like to see us pursue that. That was quite a, that was quite an amenity for the City of Maumell because of the fishing, primarily, the big fishing tournaments that they had, and, you know? And I wish we'd go back and pursue this again. We might be able, Charles Hinson is the guy that bought the peninsula and kind of killed this whole thing, and he's called me three times about it, saying he'll do whatever he can to make it happen, you know? He, he got his way, so now he's happy, and he's willing to help us. And that's the last I heard from him.
I'm unaware of anything in the budget. I doubt we would have created a line item from year to year, and if it was just in a budget as, say, a capital expenditure, it would have, it would have rolled out of the budget that, that year.
It may have been a resolution, too.
Yeah.
It sounds like a perfect opportunity for some grants, if somebody people are interested in helping with it.
They are interested, yeah. But we're going to have to have a city group to chase it down and make it happen. I've been in on that once, and it's, it's an ordeal.
And do it again?
Thanks, buddy. But I just wanted to bring that up and give you all just a little bit of history, a little information. It is important to our city, I think. It's a great amenity.
Councilmember Mosley, is that related to this?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I guess, you know, it'd take an expert to say whether a flood like we had where it comes in, the water channel actually comes over Rector Break, as to whether that would fill it right back in after we dredge it. And it seems, it's hazy, but it seems like somebody said somewhere that they did dredge out an area that was similar to what we've got, and it filled back in. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, and I don't remember where it was, it's been too long ago. But Gammon Fish was doing the design with the assistance from the Corps of Engineers, who were happy about it, and they had worked out, the hydrologist and what have you, had worked out a method of doing this, so that hopefully this time it won't fill back in.
Okay.
So they thought they had succeeded. Oh, something else that I'll throw in just as a matter of information, because it came, it shot through my head, and I'm sure it's going to shoot through yours. The peninsula used to be a full-blown island until they dredged the Arkansas River and the Kerr-McLellan Navigation Channel, and that's whenever they turned it into a peninsula because they filled in a cross between the golf course and the peninsula. between the golf course and the peninsula. And they turned it into a peninsula. And I have aerial photographs to prove that, plus an old appraisal of it. But anyway, one of my ideas that I brought to the Gammon Fish was why don't we just go take a couple of sticks of dynamite and just blow that thing out and let the water flow through there? And they came back to us in the next meeting and said that they could do that, but, and don't quote me on the number, but it seems to me like it was like $70,000 to do a study on that before they would be willing to do it. And I said, well, why in the world do you need a study on this? They said, because, and it made sense when they said it. The bottom of the river is constantly moving towards the Gulf, okay? It's mud and it's constantly moving. And they said, one thing that they didn't want to do, they needed a study on how, I forgot, and I'm not a hydrologist. They were worried about if we opened that up, it would act like a vacuum and start sucking the stuff off the bottom of the Arkansas River and fill it in very quickly. So just FYI, in case you think that. So.
Thank you. I want to skip really quick to one of the FYIs, just to mention it. Well, two, don't forget, there's a tree board vacancy. I believe the person currently in that position may be reapplying for it. But I also attached a few older speed studies that we did that was primarily used to, or the reason we got, I commissioned those speed studies, wasn't to track the speed so much as to track the number of cars going in and out of Country Club Parkway in Orleans, just to get a traffic count on that area. So with that, the planning commission report will be a following the planning commission meeting. And councilmember comments? Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I don't know who I'm directing this request slash question to, whether it's Madam City Attorney or whether it's you, Mayor. But how do we stand on the turnabout at Club Manor in South Odom?
We, I anticipate, well, I anticipate running the resolution next meeting or presenting the resolution for that next meeting. If you're asking about the legal issues.
Well, just where are we? I just don't want the ball, I don't want it to fall through the cracks.
So if you're talking about the energy switchgear?
That's one of the issues.
So the projected cost that we've, the numbers that we've received thus far, that it will be about $300,000 to relocate the utilities that would be involved to create the roundabout. As far as Energy's willingness to pay for that, they have expressed that they are not willing to pay for that. I have spoken to several different city attorney friends, both present and past, who have indicated that they think, you know, they may have to pay at least a portion of it. It is for a public necessity, public police power type purpose. It's not for any private purpose. So generally, that would be a situation where the utility would be expected to do some costs, pay some costs for relocation. We're not in the best position with the current franchise agreement because we, it's from 1986. We don't have a signed copy and it doesn't go into great detail. It's really no detail at all. As far as relocation costs, we passed a small cell ordinance since then that has expressed our general city policy that we would expect utilities to relocate when needed for public necessity purposes. But as far as how enforceable that is toward Energy, that would remain to be seen. We would, we do intend to at least go through some discussions with their legal department. As you guys know, it's very hard to get to legal people sometimes. You have to go through several layers of bureaucracy in order to get to those decision makers. So we are still working on it. It's just Arkansas does not have the most favorable law when it comes to utility relocation costs. There are some general rules, but there are so many exceptions to those general rules. And there have been some decisions that are not that favorable in the courts in Arkansas. So that's kind of where we are right now on that part.
Okay, thank you. Well, I pushed for this and I have for two years because it's a safety issue. And I keep saying it, somebody's going to get killed there. It's a dangerous intersection. And this is not a reflection on you, but could the municipal league help somehow? They have a legal department?
They do. I have not reached out to them yet because we haven't made it to people at Energy who are below that first level of just telling you no. But that may be something that we want to do in the future.
And we, so I've worked through the, we have Jay Hartman, the governmental liaison, and then our engineers, MC, I met with them this last week, have been working it through the engineering angle to try and get them to do that. And so it's in movement. My goal is to just give a resolution. It'll be for introductory purposes at the next meeting while we are using the next month to really figure out if we can get them to try and pay something or all of it or none of it and get you all the information you will probably want before you decide to go forward or not with this project. Likewise, if I may, there's been discussions about the other roundabout. I've got a meeting with Mayor Smith later this week where we will be talking about the roundabout. And the one I'm referring to is Country Club Parkway and White Oak Crossing in the Diamond Park area. I'll be meeting with Mayor Smith about that and part of Crystal Hill Road. Councilmember Gardner?
On that note, any feedback from North Little Rock on the stop sign proposal? Or is this related to that?
Well, so the, I think their reaction is about like mine. So the original reaction is why, no, traffic studies don't show that, like, there's no need for a stop sign at this point. And then what their, their goal was to wait until a, to the interchange was up so they can assess the traffic and determine whether or not it would need a stop sign. Would be the only stop on that area. And so we met with and have issued the notice to proceed on the adaptive traffic signals, which is moving right along, thanks heavily to Scott, Scott Grummer's work rallying a bunch of, herding a bunch of cats. And in that process, we met with their traffic engineer and their signal specialist that does some of that sort of stuff. And they're not very fond of that idea. But I do plan on bringing that up at the meeting with Mayor Smith.
And then back to the roundabout at Club Manor, you're not planning on a vote next time?
Right. The goal will, the goal will be to submit the budget resolution for introductory purposes. The council's long said we don't want big budget things like that that aren't emergencies to be read right away. Some of the smaller ones, I just go ahead and ask for it, but, yeah. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, if we have to relocate that box, what was it, $300,000 maybe? Roughly, what, what does that kind of get us to as far as a target number? Is it a couple of million now or?
Not a couple of million. I think we're looking at 1.4 for the whole kit and kaboodle. Now, everyone I've spoke to in the chat, I'm not an engineer, but everyone has said these are very conservative prices and they want to be the high bidder and it should come in lower than that. But you're still looking at 1.4. If we, if we heed the council's kind of informal decision at the last meeting where we presented, which was, if we're going to do it, let's keep the aesthetics, you know, let's keep that wall and the aesthetics on the higher end, which was, I don't remember, but somewhere between 50 and 100,000, it's a big gap. But we could probably shave that out if we wanted to do that. We could also really work on value engineering that down. You can bring it down. I don't know that I'm a fan of it, but there are ways to make it cheaper. One of those would be to merge Odom into one lane on both sides, right? And then into the roundabout and out, you'll have a smaller roundabout and it'll be cheaper. I don't think it's a good idea. You could, you could also impact less of the road. So what we're doing is for a good amount, before you get to the actual roundabout, we're starting to veer the road around, which is a traffic calming device so that you enter it at the right angle. You can have roundabouts that just pop you right in. I don't know that those are the safest, but the less road work you have to impact, the less expensive it'll be. So for the engineer recommended roundabout designs, it's that, it's that full kit and kaboodle. And that isn't just the engineer, it was the engineers working with Mayor Watson, who I've been communicating with today about that intersection, trying to sort things out. Councilmember Scott?
Just in looking at some of the breakdown on that cost of that roundabout, it appears that, like, curb and gutter and some of the other elements of it are priced very, very high. And I was wondering how those prices compare to roundabouts, say, done in Conway. Do we have anything that we can compare those prices to or are we just go?
So, yeah, we've, so when you look at the concrete price, for instance, their price is on the high end of that. And so I've gone to them and said, can you, can we start lowering some of these costs down? And they said, we can, but we sort of remove our, this is our guarantee, not guarantee, but this is our informal assurances that it should be less than that, right? So it's almost like our budget annually where there might be some fat. And we're like, well, okay, maybe we'll only be at staffing at 90% this year, so let's reduce that temp. We can, we can shave some of those numbers down. But then they very quickly say, well, don't come to us if you have to, if it turns out the concrete's higher or the work will be there. So, and having not gone through this process before, I know what Mayor Watson would often do is take their price, which includes a 10% contingency. And then he would often add a 10% contingency on top of that so that we weren't having to come back to the council and say, oops, the price of pebbles went up 20%. Councilmember Gardner?
Can I make a request from the, from you and I guess from the police department to get, we keep traffic accident data. Could we get accident data from, say, 16, 17, 18 on that intersection?
I think I have it to give you.
Will it list causes and, well, I say causes, like the? Failure to yield, yeah. Would it, would it, I would be curious before.
The primary cause. You're just sitting here thinking about that particular.
Yeah. So I would, just before we spend a lot of money, I would, I would like to see what the problems are.
Probably not just accidents, but accidents with injury, right?
Well, it should show both, right? If a police responds.
But they're different responses. So I ran a, or asked the police department, which is probably Captain Pickard, to run a report on all the accidents in the area with somebody complaining about a particular intersection being dangerous. And we had no accidents. And if you look at just the pure accident numbers, you'll get different information than if you look at the accidents with injury or serious injury. So we can get all that.
Yeah, any available. I mean, if you've got more years, that's great. I would just be curious to see what the actual problem is.
Captain Pickard, is there, are we able to run a report and get the cause of an accident? If you could, if you could come up here for just a moment, please?
Come on in, Corey.
To the microphone so everyone at home can, so you got the camera pointed to them? Are we able to run that sort of report to figure out what the causes of all the accidents are?
I don't know if we can run that specific report, but if nothing else, I can run the report, find the accident numbers and hand check.
And hand check all the accidents and?
If I need to.
Well, I'm not even asking for necessarily you to do all that. I would just be curious in a number to begin with and if we wanted more.
But, okay. Let's start with that so that y'all aren't doing.
We can do that.
Thank you, sir.
I don't think you can use just failure to yield because, and I'm not a policeman, but it seems to me that most of the time in accidents, somebody's going to get a ticket for something. And just failure to yield, I'm not sure if that indicates a danger posed at crossing that intersection.
We may not issue a citation per se for every accident, but it's notated in the accident report on usually page three. It says causing factors or contributing factors to the accident. So that's where it's.
I know one of the problems, it's not just, even if a ticket's issued for failure to yield, trying to get across Club, across Odom, people just don't realize how far that is and how fast those people on Odom are coming at you. And it's almost seven lanes across there, you know, two each direction, two turn lanes plus the median. And it's deceivingly far across there. So I don't know that just tickets issued would tell us a whole lot.
Let's just, let's just get the accidents, accidents with injury and we'll get that. And then if the council wants a hand analysis, we can get the council, what the council desires. That sound?
Sir.
Can you get that for me, please, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. Any additional councilmember comments? If not, we'll move right along to city attorney comments?
No city attorney comments.
City clerk treasurer?
No comments.
With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So we offer, yes.
All those in favor say yes. All opposed say no. We are adjourned.